Okay, good evening and welcome to the June 26th meeting of the Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. First thing we'll start off with is me reading the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meeting Procedure. All persons in attendance at Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to vibrate or off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside of the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The Chair may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services by 3:30 PM on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first followed by Board of Adjustment business. The Chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The Chair will read each item, each agenda item into the record and ask the applicants to come forward to the presenter's table, state his or her, their names and addresses for the record and explain his, her, or their request. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The Chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker, per agenda item unless the Chair allows a speaker additional time. The Chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the Chair recognizes a speaker, he or she may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record and write such on the speaker log and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant's. All comments are to be directed toward the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The Chair reserves the right to ask a group with similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the Chair will close public comment period on the agenda item. No further comment will be taken after this point. The Chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then continue its discussion on the agenda item and the Chair will entertain a motion on it. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will develop findings of fact for conditional use permit and variance applications and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on an agenda item, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 PM. No new meeting, no new agenda items shall be considered after 9:45. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may at its discretion continue an item that is on the floor at 10:00 PM. After, any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date, time preferably the immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 PM and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. Planning Commission Board of Adjustment through the Chair may modify these procedures prior to a meeting or agenda item. Okay, so first is Planning Commission Business. Approval of minutes, which I don't believe we have any. And there's no old business or new business, so we're going to move on to Board of Adjustment. And that would be the approval of the minutes from the May 22nd, 2023 meeting. Anybody have any issues with the minutes from that May meeting?
This is Mike, I'll make the motion to approve the May minutes.
Okay, this is Veronica, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike to approve and a second by Veronica. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. The motion is passed. Okay, so we're going to move on. We'll have no old business for the Board of Adjustment, so we're moving on to new business. And the first would be variance application 12-V-23 by Birch Harbor Resorts. Lots 1 through 12, Block 1 and all of Block 2, Birch Harbor, Section 15, Township 141, Range 34, Lake Emma Township on Lower Bottle Lake, recreational development lake, parcels Applicants are request, applicants are requesting a variance from Section 701 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed expansion of a non-conforming resort use and Section 502.2 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed deck to be located within the 100-foot ordinary high-water mark structure setback. Do we have the applicants here? If you'd come up to the table. Give us your name, addresses, and then a brief description of what you'd like to do.
I'm Gary Blakely, 25546 Harbor Trail, Park Rapids, Minnesota.
Teresa Blakely, 25546 Harbor Trail, Park Rapids.
Okay, so maybe just go over for us once again what you're looking to do here and then we can discuss it.
We just, last year we got a variance to remove the mobile home that was there and to put a seasonal RV and we wanted to add a deck for the people at that RV site. And we purposely put the RV far enough back so the deck would not encroach any further than the old mobile home was to the lake.
Okay.
As well as the shed?
Just one thing at a time.
Okay, um, any questions on that?
This is Ken, just for the facts, for the record, the shed you're proposing does meet all setbacks and it is a resort use application. The screened-in porch on Cabin 9 is 197 feet, so it meets the setback requirements and will be built to the current platform that's there. And the RV is being, meets the requirements of variant 65-V21, which is, it's a mobile home or RV. It meets the footprint of the previous mobile home and it's, meets the 70-foot setback with any kind of entrance. Those are in fact the facts we're dealing with.
Yes.
We actually put the, the RV back.
Further than the mobile home was.
With the intention of that we didn't want to encroach any farther than the 70 feet with the deck.
Yeah.
So we pushed the RV back as far as we could before it was on the edge of that berm.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Veronica speaking. I wanted to clarify that as well and I appreciate you doing that. I appreciate you moving the RV back further to accommodate the proposed deck that you have. I did notice that during lot views, so thank you for that.
This is Mark, this question for Eric. On that previous mobile home that was in there, um, did we, do we know that that was at 70 feet? Did we measure it at the time or do we know now?
Eric speaking, no, it wasn't measured and part of that was, uh, could be the timing of the application and also the shoreline there is a very deep cattail wetland, so it's not the easiest to identify the ordinary high, so my recollection is we took their word back at the time of the prior variance application that it was 70 feet. What I can say is that during the lot view this time, as they pointed out, they left the evidence of the ground conditions and so I would agree that they've cited the RV accordingly to allow the requested deck now to be at 70, or at the same setback as the prior mobile home.
As the mobile home was, okay. Okay. Anybody else? Questions? While we're thinking, we'll just open it up, excuse me, for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Anybody else with further questions or ready to make a motion?
This is Veronica, I can make a motion unless, unless anybody has further questions.
I was, I was just gonna, um, comment on the fact that, that I think my observation is that you've moved that, um, the RV back as far as you can before you ride up to the fairly steep bank that comes off the backside. So moving it back from a practical difficulty standpoint, you could not move it back any farther. I think that's what I observed in the pictures that came with the application, excuse me, confirm that, so.
Yep, and this is Veronica speaking. I had the same supportive statements as Ken did, that the shed meets the Shoreland Management Ordinance setback requirements, the proposed deck meets the setback condition as according to the 65-V21. And the proposed screened porch and decks that they have on Cabin 9 meets all Shoreland Management Ordinance setbacks as well. Um, I did want to note that the, I want to ask Eric for clarification first. The screened-in porch that they are proposing, the eight by 14, that's the only part of the unit density that would increase, is that correct? Not any other, no decks, just the screened-in porch? Okay? So then for me, the unit density increases minimally by only 112 square feet, so I'm, I'm open.
Less than 1%.
I'm open to that, yes, so.
So if you're ready?
I am prepared, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so this is Veronica, I make a motion to approve the application as presented on the site plan. I would also make sure that I put in the condition that the eight by 31-foot proposed deck meets the same setback criteria as the RV in 65-V-21 as you already made room for, so it'll be perfect. And I can go ahead with some findings of facts if you'd like. Number one is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls. Yes, the proposed 10 by 12 shed meets all Shoreland Management Ordinance setbacks. The property complies with the 25% impervious surface threshold and the variance is needed from Section 701, non-conforming uses, to add any new structure that is devoted to the non-conforming resort use on the property. The proposed eight-foot by 31-foot lakeside deck will be placed no closer than the previously approved RV setback per variant 65-V21. And the eight by 14 screened porch addition and eight by 14 deck addition all meet setback requirements. Number two is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by an official control. Yes, it is reasonable to have a lakeside decks and screened-in porch. Again, the eight by 31 proposed deck on RV site will not be any closer to the ordinary high watermark than what the RV structure was approved for in the variant 65-V21. And the 10 by 12 shed is modest in size and a reasonable request to store items for the RV unit. And the proposed eight by 14 screened-in porch addition and lakeside deck additions to Cabin 9 are modest with approximately 112 feet of living space causing just a slight increase in the unit density. Number three is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior owners. Yes, the variance is needed from Section 701, non-conforming uses, to add any new structures that are devoted to the non-conforming resort use on the property. Number four, will the issuance maintain the essential character of the locality? Yes, the property consists of non-conforming resort use. Lakeside decks, screened porches, and modest sized sheds are common on most cabins and RV units and resorts. And number five, does the stated practical difficulty involve more than just economic considerations? Yes, economics are not cited in the application as practical difficulty.
Okay, thank you Veronica. Anybody ready to make a second?
This is Timothy, I'll make a second on that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Veronica to approve and she's provided us with the findings of fact, a second by Timothy. So Timothy, how do you vote?
Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. Your motion is passed and you should be receiving a letter from the ESO stating as such.
Do we have to wait for the letter to apply for the permit?
I'd give us just a day or two so that staff can get up to speed on the outcome of tonight's meeting and then they'll be ready to process your format.
Alright. Thank you.
Okay, next order of business is variance application 13-V-23 by Timothy and Wendy Olson. Lot 2 and part of Lot 3, Miller's Lakeview, Section 27, Township 141, Range 33, Mantrap Township on Spider Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 20.38.00200. Applicants are requesting variances from Sections 502.2 and 503 of the Shoreline Management Ordinance to place a residential dwelling unit on the lot that would not meet the 100-foot ordinary high-water mark structure setback, the 30-foot crest of bluff, of bluff structure setback, the 20-foot road right-of-way setback, and the 10-foot rear lot line setback. Do we have the applicants here? So if you'd come up to the table here, we'll... Give us your name and permanent address and then you could give us a brief description again of what you'd like to do and then we'll talk about it.
My name is Wendy Olson. I live at 1323 River Drive South in Morehead, Minnesota.
Timothy Olson, I live in Morehead, 1323 River Drive South in Morehead.
Okay, um, okay, and what's your, what are you here for?
Okay, well, our...
We're looking at the property on 23295 Grapevine Trail, Nevis. You got that up there, thank you. And we're, um, we're requesting a variance to be able to build a retirement home at the current, do you have it?
Hold the microphone closer and speak to it, please.
Okay.
You can bend it.
I've got it, thank you.
She's got a soft voice, it happens all the time.
It happens at school all the time. Okay, so the, um, the variant request is for a three-foot setback from the rear lot line, the road right-of-way, for an eve of the home's entry. For the dimensions of the entry are six feet wide by 20 feet long. A seven-foot setback from the rear lot line, the road right-of-way, for the remaining 52 feet of eve is also requested. The proposed structure wall of the home from the rear lot line, road right-of-way, request is nine feet. The back lot line is about 20 to 25 feet from the actual road surface. The road has a right-of-way setback, I think, of 66 feet and is a dead-end road that serves nine other homes. If the road was ever built, it's unlikely that it would move closer to the home or it would be towards the other side away from the lake. And we're also requesting a proposed home setback of 75 feet from the OHWM.
Ordinary high watermark. Yep, yep.
So, did you, I don't need to read the letter, do I? Did you already all read the letter? Okay, so it is a impractical difficulty though, is under, not under our control.
Okay, um, any questions here from the board?
This is Mike. Do you have house plans already in hand?
Yes, we, uh, due to our meeting, our onsite meeting, we did, um, because the, of the sketch, um, questions about the, uh, level, at the ground level up towards the roadside, we did get, um, some clarification, some numbers, um, promptly after our meeting just to clarify, um, the details of, of the onsite meeting as far as the levels, the, the floor level, the fill going towards, from, away from the home. So we, we do have that, those facts for you.
Were able to present them or not?
Yeah, I don't, just, I don't know if, um, to follow along, if, if that's okay. We have copies for you, if that's okay to follow along.
For each of you?
Okay, yes.
So we got exact facts of what we tried to, um, or what we stated, um, in our onsite meeting, so. You want to hand them to Eric?
Yep.
He can pass them out to us. So...
So the description is on the front and the drawing is on the back and each square is a one-foot square, just to, so that you know.
Let's see, where's... Okay, so...
Also to let you know, we did do a neighborhood walkthrough this morning. And I know there were some questions about being a walkout or if it was able to be a walkout. And our neighbor to the south, who we bought the home from, who is basically the almost exact same lot as we do, he has a walkout and the one next to him has a walkout. So there's two to the south that have walkouts and two lots to the north is also a walkout.
Yeah, so, um, if everybody has...
Yeah, those are the photos on the bottom of what you have up on the screen right now. That should help clarify some of those questions.
Yeah, so the drawing, as you see on the back, corresponds with, um, the, the six items on the front, uh, talked about the, as we all stood at the, um, walkout level that, as, as it states, between the walkout level to the floor, uh, level elevation, as, as you see on the drawing, the difference in height, um, as it states, is between five to six, uh, feet, um, from the soil, pardon me?
Five seven, I think it's what you can...
Yeah.
Five feet seven inches.
Yep, and, um, we talked about the foundation height, as it states, the, the ceiling would be seven foot six inches, as you can see.
And the floor.
And then with, using, uh, with using the 16-inch, uh, foretresses, top of house floor, again with the green street sill plate included, would be 100, 108.25. So the number five, as you can see, shows a difference of 42.5, 25, as you can see, that is, that is the part, that's the rear of the home towards the road of the raised, um, basement. The, so that's the exposed, um, part of the foundation on the roadside. And as you can see, number six would be between 18 to 20 inches of backfill as it states. And that's, it's listed there, again, um, that line going down, that is the backfill as, as it states, the existing elevation above the walkout. So the distance between the actual grade towards the road is 42... Roughly, yeah, 42.25 inches. So then with the backfill, after backfilling it, um, up to a foot, as it states on the drawing, to, it ends up being, um, it would end up being about two to three steps up into the home as we talked about the other day, but just to clarify, you know, what we talked about, this, this points out the facts.
And with the stairs, um, seeing how the road right-of-way is there, um, the builder did recommend that we could go to the side of the home instead of going out to come along the side, to not go out.
So the stairs would go to the side of the home as, as it's stated in number six as well, as my wife just said, stairs going parallel to the building to stay inside the setback request. So, um, instead of, you know, walking, it would go parallel to the, to the home. So, I guess, um, any questions just on that part? For starters, just, again, trying to clarify the concerns that we talked about.
This is Mike. I guess if you could state at what elevation the foundation is going to go in, um, so the top of the slab, if, if you're using the slab for the walkout portion, and if your proposal is calling for building above existing or digging down, so do you know that elevation? You know, it's, if you look up, uh, you know, it looks like we're at, is it 1470, is it 1471, 1472? I'm assuming what we're seeing here is, is a, some kind of a recreational vehicle and if I see the three, um, cement slabs, uh, as I recall, that was going to be your level of the walkout?
Correct.
But if we could have that actual elevation and then go from there to determine where our elevation is, uh, in relation to that hillside and how close, close it's going to be. My concern is, when I looked at it, appeared to me that between the slab and then going back to the road is going to require a fair amount of excavation to put this home in. But I don't know because I'm having a hard time determining what elevations you're building at, not six feet above this or anything like that, but the actual elevation of the slab.
The elevation from the walkout to the, to the elevation where, the existing elevation, so from here, the walkout, to where you guys were standing, where the back front door would be, is five foot six inches. That's the, well, that's the difference.
That's not what I'm asking, I guess, without the actual elevations, I'm having a, a difficult time unless someone can help me, uh, on, on, in, in how you're explaining it's not helping me to envision what we're talking about for disturbance on this hillside, on this bluff.
You want elevation above sea level, like 14, 40, something?
Whatever, or some starting point that the existing cement slab or... Whatever, or some starting point that the existing cement slab or pad that's out there, that is, we're not going below that and then we're going from there? And how does that translate to then an elevation into that hillside? I guess what I'm saying, without a actual, those actual numbers, I can't determine how much earth is being disturbed, because this is, everything is within the bluff.
Right.
Well, I, I thought he was going to point to actually having an elevation, you don't have one.
I have a copy of that. I don't think I have it with me.
Okay, let me, let me switch gears just a little bit. The drawing that I have, the arc, or the surveyor drawing,
Yes.
Shows in, in a dark gray, um, the street. The cart path, or whatever you want to call it.
Yep.
How far is the center line of that? Street as it is now, from the edge of the right-of-way? And I ask the question because here it show, it shows that the street is in the right-of-way and yet on the county's GIS, uh, maps, it shows the actual street encroaching farther into your property. So, I'm trying to decide, do I go by this drawing? And if I do, how far is the center line of the road from the right-of-way edge? See there?
I do, the, so the property line, the arrow that you're pointing to?
Yeah.
That's the property line, road right-of-way, and that, and that goes to, to the edge of road from there is about twenty-five feet. So to the middle of road would be another ten feet?
You, you say it's twenty-five feet to the edge of the road from your property line?
Yes. Yep, so that area that was treed with, with those large Norway pines?
Sure didn't seem that spacious to me, nor there, I don't know about anybody else. It seemed like you were much closer, closer than that. I'm concerned about if snowplow comes by and you're gonna pile the snow on your front porch.
Yeah, and, and, and the, the, um, all of the properties that are in that similar area along that bluff, it's, uh, so for example, our property, that, the road is actually, if you go up a little further where the, um, yeah, where the se- as you can see, are, are actually property, you're correct in that, that en- edge of our property is actually in the road. So the road.
Just the corner, but not the, the, not the parallel line next to it. I'm, I'm not saying.
The building part, yeah.
The road now does not run on your property, you know that.
In, in, in the upper corner, it does, to answer that part of, whoops, sorry.
Not where the house is.
Correct, yep, yep, so, um.
So, and we do have photos of the, some, the houses that are near ours, that we're proposing this. It's the one next door to the south that we bought the property from, it's basically like a mirror of what they built, except for ours will not be as tall as theirs. We're looking at just a one-level, not a two-level, and they also have a walkout. So Vic and Debbie Olson, which are, they're no relation to us, but they just have the same last name, um, sold us this property and they had two variances prior to ours. Um, one was in, um, oh-one and one was thirteen.
And it's, it's very, very similar to what we're proposing, so there had, has been two.
There are no relatives to yours, even though it's Olson's.
No.
They're very nice, but they're not related.
Yeah, so, w- we actually, in regards to your guys' concerns from the onsite meeting, we actually took photos, um, of the structures, the neighboring structures, one being the next-door neighbor.
If I could interrupt, um, I think we're aware of what other properties, but we're dealing with this particular tract.
Yep.
So in my mind, it, it's, we're aware of it and beyond that, it's, it's really not a material matter to this particular case.
Okay.
Um, as I look at it, um, again, I can only state is, my concerns, without knowing the elevations and how much dirt and whether the accuracy of this map compared to the build, I have a hard time moving forward. Um, and, and I'm, that's what I'm lacking, is I'm going to build at this elevation, it's surveyed out to some extent, um, so I actually know what that disturbance is going to be, because right now, we know that it's flat and then it goes up really steep, it's all within the bluff.
Mm-hmm.
I need to know how much dirt, earth is going to be moved to accomplish what you're proposing here, and I'm not seeing an answer to that.
Okay, I'm gonna interrupt this for a second here and I'm, everybody take a break and I'm gonna open for public comment. And seeing none, we'll close that, oh, we do have a public comment. If you'd step up to the podium there and, uh, give your name on, to the.
On the sheet?
On the sheet and verbally, and then you can make your comments.
Sure, I'm Kim Olson, I'm the chairman of the Mantrap Township.
Okay.
And I'm here because we have, we're trying to become a little bit more involved because of issues we've had with overlapping with shoreland and solely township ordinances. Um, to, I can't address the dirt moving thing, but I can address Mr. Grob.
Yep, that's Ken Grob.
I'll just take my glasses off. Um, I can address the snowplow road concern.
Okay.
So when this particular subdivision was built, and it was what, back in the fifties or sixties, um, it was plotted out with the right-of-way shown, with the third, with the sixty-six foot right-of-way. As they were doing things to the properties, they basically developed a cartway and that cartway was not where the road was supposed to have been placed. When it came, came time to put the road in, they didn't want to cha- damage more trees, they didn't want it, so the road ended up staying where it was, even though that's not where it was plotted. We've actually, I actually had the road contractor, um, Mr. Olson has been, and no relation between us either. Lots of Olsons in the area.
It's just.
There's Olsons everywhere.
Common name, yeah.
Um, so Tim has been in contact with me for over, what, about six weeks now, working on, you know, this whole issue, because that road is a problem for us as a township to maintain. But we actually brought the road contractor out to the property a couple of weeks ago to make sure there weren't going to be any plowing issues, et cetera. And there is, um, there is quite a bit of room between the road edge and where his property line starts. And we have no issues with any kind of plowing or encroaching on the right-of-way.
The drawing though would show that the road, if this gray is the actual road, it's right in the middle of the planted road. So to say that it's not, it wasn't put in the right places, that mean the plant should have been?
If you, if you look at the, the road entirely, it doesn't stay within the.
Yeah, but in his case, it is, right here.
So.
This is Timothy. Eric, could you bring up the GIS map?
Yeah, the, the GIS map confused me too, and I kept arguing with poor Tim here about it.
Yep.
I'm like, but the road is going through your property.
Hey, yeah. That entire, the yellow line, north and south there? To the east, that one right there, is that the edge of that right-of-way?
That's the edge of the e- of the, of the, yeah, the road, plant. Yeah, I think.
And I don't think that's where this is on this survey, but.
That's this line.
Okay.
Thing to remember with the parcel map is it's got a disclaimer on it when you open it that says it's, it's not super accurate, so don't rely on it for accuracy.
So we should go by this, the, the, uh, the surveyor, and he seems to indicate certain monuments that existed, so, um, that's what he's used, is his baseline, okay.
Um, and just overall, um, like I said, we've been working with Tim and the township has no issues with what he wants to do.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, we'll go back to this discussion. Um, I'm gonna expand a little bit on what Mike has been saying. To me, it seems like the application is just a little bit premature, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. But, um, for instance, that, that flat spot at the bottom where you called walkout level?
Yes.
Um, I would like to see that elevation noted on a survey, um, so that I have something to go on as, um, not speculation from my point of view. And I think a little more developed plan and those numbers by a surveyor would help me understand, um, in trying to make your impact on that bluff as minimal as possible. I mean, uh, so, so from my point of view, I think, um, I don't know how my board members here feel, but I, I feel we're not quite there yet with the information we need. And, um, unless we, unless I hear something different, my feeling is I think this should be tabled and give you the opportunity to, um, gather that information and come back to us.
Mm-hmm.
So unless you have further information, uh, I appreciate these drawings, but even these, um, don't give me, from, to my satisfaction, what I need to make sure. I'm trying to ensure that that, that level, if possible, and I think there are ways from, you know, I have somewhat of a building background, so I think a, a plan could be put in there that would do minimal impact and come out at that spot and not have to do any more damage or excavating, we'll call it. Um, but it's your plan, um, I just needed more information from my point of view.
So you'd like to see a profile, if I looked at it from the side, a profile of the hill and what's cut into, and then a calculation of how much dirt is being.
Well, I'd like to see an elevation shot right here, Ken.
Yeah.
So that I know what's existing there.
Yeah, okay.
And then with a basement plan that's developed, I could easily see if, you know, if they would need, if they could work within the elevations that are here, um, or would you have to be doing more digging than, than what maybe you're thinking? I know you've, it sounds like you've gotten some advice, uh, from a construction, a builder, but, um, without that shot, to me, if I, if I would move to approve this, I'm kinda giving you a blank check on that elevation. And if it turns out that you had to do more to make it work, I had, I have no control over that. I'd like a little bit of control from my point of view to try to maintain that, that bluff as, as much as we can.
And that, and that's actually exactly what we did. Um, Kevin was kind enough to come over, um, shortly thereafter, and we shot it, again, with his transit, and from basement level to the road is eleven, the, the difference is eleven feet to the road. So to put things into perspective, this, the level that we stood on, where we were gonna walk out of the, the roadside door, the difference between where we were standing, um, on the walkout towards the lake is five feet six inches. As, I think you would all agree, as you stood there, um, near those cement, um, pieces, you know, it, if you, at eye level, you, you, you would look at, and, and he, we actually shot it, as I mentioned, with.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying I want that elevation, because then I can go out there and I can say, okay, you maintained it or you didn't. Um, or at least somebody, if anybody were to check. So for me, that's what I want, I want that elevation number, which I believe only a surveyor can provide.
It's actually been, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's not on this survey, so there's no number here for me to know what it is.
Okay, I, I think Mr. Lindo, I'm not sure if he has it on the prior survey from the prior owner, who'd had it surveyed.
It's not part of our information packet, I don't believe.
So we need to reset that?
So, I mean, unless we have it here, that, that's what I need. Anybody on the board have different opinions on that, or?
Why, one question. Why, you said that, that when you had builders out there, they were suggesting the best thing to do was to put a walkout second level.
Yes.
Um, the original variance back in thirteen, obviously a lot of thought was put into it. And it specified a single level, no garage, fifteen feet from the right-of-way, which seems to me more appropriate for this particular location. What we're into with this discussion is the kind of creepy elegance. Now, you want to add a garage, you want to say add a second level and push it closer to the road, which makes it a lot more problematic. There's at least, what did I say, there are four variances you need to build. It almost smacks of, of a situation where it's not a buildable lot for what you want to build. You know, setback, bluff, right-of-way, and back rear line. Those are four non-conforming issues that you're asking us to approve, because you're asking for something much more than what was deemed reasonable, what, eight, ten years ago, when the first variance was given. So, back to Mark's point, we need to know a lot more exactly what you want to build, how it's gonna fit there, how it's gonna relate to the road, and what we have for information, I think is what I'm supporting.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Well, we would like to retire here and have it be our home. And, um, a lot of our neighbors and people that we know along the shore there have also recommended to have a garage as we get older. We would like to have a garage attached, which would be wonderful. So we've kind of gone with a single stall. And we would like to be, my husband and I, on the same level, so we would like a small kitchen, a small living, and a bedroom on the top floor. So, that's what we're proposing, so that we could be here and live here year-round and be part of the community. Um, I know some of our friends down the way, they're just turning eighty and they do not have a garage and they, um, we've been told that they plan on selling because of that. And, because they, they changed part of their home that had been a garage into a living space and now it's not working for them. So we're kind of looking at the longevity of being able to use the property.
You know, the other sort of factor that comes into this, um, you own two and a half acres across the road. Why couldn't you build something very nice there and add another seventy-five feet to your walk? Because you don't, you, this particular lot isn't a, like you're on the lake, you're way up on a bluff, a lot of foliage and so on. It would seem to me that you could do a lot more, just moving in across the road. Have you thought about that?
We didn't buy the lot, the lake lot, for that, we, we bought the lot, the lake lot, and because there's not a lot of room to park your car,
Yeah.
and in addition to the septic, um, getting the septic, uh, away from the lake further, the, the prior owners were gracious enough to allow us to, uh, purchase the land across the road for those reasons. So we bought the lake lot to, like most do.
We love being up in the trees.
On the lake. And as far as the setbacks, um, that you mentioned, all of, you know, unfortunately, the lots were plotted that way in the late fifties to early sixties, which is our practical difficulty. We don't have any control over that. And all of the properties along there have all had to, uh, receive some type of variance in order to be able to do that. So, to back up a little bit, the prior owner with his prior two variances, so one was in two thousand and one, um, which he proposed the almost identical, um, footprint of, of what we're doing. Small home with a small attached garage, it's almost the exact same dimensions. And, so that's how the lot was created. By doing so, he actually combined two lots, which ended up being almost two and a half lots, again, to help with the integrity of the lake, to not allow more homes to be put in that area. So, we're, we're doing, so the two thousand and one is almost identical to what we're proposing. That was approved. In two thousand and thirteen, again, he proposed almost the identical thing as well, but he ended up with an amendment, because his structure, I don't, I can't say exactly why, but he was of the understanding, now whether his. Now, whether his structure got too tall and got too close to the power line, that is the reason. Why he moved his plan towards the lake further, ten feet back. Otherwise, he was proposing the ex, almost the identical, um, thing that, that we are as well. And that's why we feel it's more important to keep the home further away from the lake where.
Um, I don't wanna get too much in the weeds here, uh.
Yep.
Try to make, move this along.
Right.
Um, a question for Eric is if, if I make a motion that's approved to table this. What, what timeframe does that put for them, Eric, or how does that work again? Refresh my memory.
Sure. So the application date was May twenty-fifth. And I did the, excuse me, scheduling to see the furthest out that the board could take this up. And still be within the sixty-day rule requirements. Uh, we could extend our review up to a hundred and twenty days from the application date. And that would allow you, uh, the latest of, uh, the August meeting to, uh, act on this. Uh, if you needed additional time, then the applicants would always have the ability to sign a waiver form, which would give us additional. Time beyond that, but that would be the window that we would have as the county.
Okay, so without that waiver signing, we could go to the August meeting.
Correct.
Uh, by tabling it tonight. Okay, then I, I will simply ask the board, is, does anybody else have any input, or?
I do.
Okay, go ahead Veronica.
Mr. Travis, this is Veronica speaking. I just have a couple of questions for the applicants. So when did you purchase this particular piece of property?
Eight years ago.
And so that would be two thousand?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Okay, and so at that time, you were aware of the variance thirty-one dash V dash thirteen? Because it was still when you purchased the property.
When we purchased.
When you purchased the property with that variance on it, then you were already open to a floor plan of that size with the variance.
Yes, correct.
Okay, cause I am very much in favor, and so that, you just didn't act upon it? I mean, is there reasons why you didn't act upon that variance and start?
Yes, ye- yes, there are.
Okay, what are those reasons?
I, I did.
Quick reasons. I mean, not, you don't have to go into a long, long.
Sorry.
I mean, no, no offense, I just mean, you don't have to go into a long story.
So no, we, we absolutely, given the, the time in our lives, um, we weren't ready to be able to do that.
Okay, but you understood that it had a sunset clause and it was going to expire within five years.
Yeah, we did, and we absolutely, it was absolutely on our minds for those remaining few, few years that were left of the prior owner's variance, as you mentioned.
Did you go in and ask Environmental Services about extending that?
We absolutely did, and we absolutely got an extension positively.
Still didn't act upon it after, even after you had that extension?
We did.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So my, here's my concern, since the applicants purchased the property knowingly that they had this variance was already approved at this size. They went ahead and got another extension, had more time to act upon the variance if needed. I personally am in favor of the two thousand thirteen variance. Because as Ken mentioned, it is, this is on a bluff. It has four different variance requests that need to be met in order for them to build. And I'm in favor of those of the two thousand thirteen sizes. You are asking for more than what was granted in two thousand thirteen, which is, is dual, you know, it's open, we're open to those ideas. I'm not in favor of a three-foot road right of way setback. In most variance applications, my biggest concern for your home and for you and the safety of others is not three feet from the road right of way. I am very much in favor of the fifteen-foot road right of way setback as proposed or as was approved in two thousand thirteen. So again, I'm only giving my feedback of what I'm like, what they were aware of, when, the time they purchased it. They also asked for the extension and it was granted, so then now we're here because it expired.
Is that extension open-ended? Or did it, it, it is?
One year.
One year. So that variance now is void?
Correct.
Okay.
So can I comment on, on your additional ten feet that?
The additional ten feet for?
Of the two thousand thirteen variance. He, he actually, his variance request was identical to his two thousand one variance request. But due to the power line easement, he was, apparently it was, either his structure was too tall. Where he was under the understanding that he, that's why he moved the home closer to the lake, ten feet. And it was only because, uh, it states around the thirteen, if I could just read it. Due to an un- unknown power line easement issue, ten feet more are needed from the rear lot line. A revised total of fifteen s- feet. So then now they're encroaching more on the ordinary high watermark.
Right, well, I was only going by the information given to me in the staff report. I did not read you personally, the.
The prior.
The, yep, and you've already had approval from the township, or from Mantrap as well for your, for your building, so.
Yes.
Again, I imagine that that same approval would have been given for this variance as well. Again, I have not seen the variance, I'm only going by the staff report with the indications that the. What was presented, the twenty-four by forty-four dwelling at a seventy-five foot ordinary high watermark setback with a fifteen-foot road right of way setback. Those are the only ones criteria that I have on the staff report, indicating what the tw- two thousand thirteen variance request was.
Yeah, and words.
And I'm only comparing those to what you're wanting now, a three-foot setback with a larger dwelling with the attached garage.
Well, actually, it's, it's, from the structure, it's nine foot to the property line. So, um, y- your regulations are, are ten feet. So I'm just talking the rear, rear wall of the structure, um, not to include the stairwell. Um, so again, to, I, I guess to, we're pushing the home nine feet, eight feet. Away from the lake, just to clarify. And as Kim, uh, mentioned, that the whole road, that's her road, is a non-issue. Uh, we, she came out with the board members to include the maintainer. And based on that road and, and the location of all the homes along there. Um, ours is actually, and we took photos, which we didn't realize we had to, um, submit.
Prior.
Prior to Wednesday, of all of the homes along there, the most, uh, the easiest example is the one right next door. Which is, um, actually on, if you move, move the screen up. Is, right next door is actually closer to the road. And, you know, again, we have photos, you know, there's a lot of other people here, so.
Yeah.
Um, uh, in it, these photos also explain the height of the foundation. Is almost identical to what our neighbor Vic Olson, the prior owner of the property. Almost identical, uh, with a seven foot, seven and a half foot elevation, or excuse me. Foundation at the lakeside and forty-four to forty-six inches on the roadside to explain, um, that, the elevation question as well.
I understand what you're saying.
Yep.
I'm gonna pose a question to my board. Is anybody here ready to either make a motion to pass or deny this application? So I think maybe we're in agreement that maybe we table it for a little more info.
This is Mike, um, yeah, I think table in it, um, it could be problematic whether we can meet it. With the understanding that if there is no waiver signed, that it, this comes back and we have to act on. In August, if we don't have additional information, I, I personally would not be able to vote in the affirmative for this. So just that everyone's aware, um.
What we're looking for, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think.
We're looking for those elevations.
Elevations of existing elevations in relation to what's going to be built. Um, all four corners and how much fill and how that fills into that hillside, uh, yeah.
Okay, okay, anybody else? All right, um, I'm gonna make a motion then to table this. Um, and do I have a second?
You should be explicit about what we want.
Okay, I'm sorry, yep. Um, so what we're looking for is, uh, I'd be looking for a surveyor's shot on elevation, as Mike described. Uh, of that lowest floor. And then a more developed house plan that would show me elevations, how that's gonna work within the, the surveyor's shot. So, um, lowest floor, first, uh, basement floor height, um, that type of thing. So then, then we know, and we'd have something concrete, I think is what Mike and I are both trying to say here. Um, that we'd be voting on. And, uh, with that, with that elevation, to me, I know I've said this numerous times. But then I know exactly what I'm asking you to achieve in building this. So that's what we'd be looking for.
Okay, so the survey at the level and also how much.
Excavation.
Excavation would be removed.
And fill, yep.
And fill would be added, okay.
So to me, I, I mean, this, this, what Eric has pulled up here, it could, um, whoever did this, um, it could be added to that work. Um, because I don't see those shots, those elevation shots. So that would, you know, it's not like, to me, they would have to necessarily do the, recreate the whole thing. They could be adding to that work. That's what I think could happen there.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's what I'm looking for is, uh, condition of this table.
This is Mike, I'll second that.
The, just one more thing, back to the setbacks. Um, the edge of the garage is, uh, what, uh, nine feet from the. Property line. Line. Um, is that a big enough, is that a safety enough platform? Or apron in front of a garage?
I can't make that determination myself, I mean, cars.
This is Mike, with, with, again, without all the elevations, it's hard to make that determination.
Right. Okay, so we've got a motion by myself to table, a second by Mike. Um, Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I'll vote aye.
Uh, Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye. So your application is tabled and, um, I guess you'd have to be in contact with Eric about getting that information. To him so that we could have it prior to, um, the latest would be the August meeting, is that, okay? Any questions?
I don't think so, uh, you know, other than, you know, you mentioned the fluoride again, um, which is. Thank, I'm very thankful you were allowed to look at additional materials. Um, it's clearly stated a hundred and eight point two-five, um, floor level and then the other elevations. Um, but thank you again for, for taking this additional information.
You're welcome, um, we'll wait to hear from you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, our, our next variance application is, um, fourteen dash V dash twenty-three by Peter and Ann Lewis. Part of Government Lot Five, Section Ten Township one thirty-nine, Range Thirty-three. Crow Wing Township on Third Crow Wing Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel zero six point one zero point zero zero nine zero zero. Applicants are requesting an after-the-fact variance from Section five oh two, point two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance. For a residential dwelling located within the hundred-foot ordinary high watermark structure setback. Do we have the applicants here? So if you could give us your name and permanent address for the record and then tell us what you're looking to do.
Okay, it's Ann Lewis, two five one zero zero Chickadee Lane, Nevis, Minnesota. And, um. So we brought, bought the property in two thousand eighteen and we're not aware that there was any compliance issues. But, um, evidently on the, uh, the one corner, the one corner of the house is in compliance. The other corner is at ninety-six feet from the high watermark to the foundation, which was a setback. At the time of the house, when the house was built years ago. And, um, after talking with Environmental Services, they said to put the proposed setback at ninety-four feet, six inches. Because now it's to the eve and our eve is a foot and a half.
Okay. Okay. Any questions by my board here?
Well, just, just for the fact, or for the, for the record. Um, if we approve this variance, along with it is, there's a proposal to build a twenty by sixteen. Uh, addition on the backside of the house.
Mm-hmm.
And if we approve it, we should be aware of the fact that that can be built by permit and not variance.
Okay. Anybody else?
This is Veronica speaking, I don't have any questions. I just have a, a comment that, um, it just appears that only the west portion of the house, you know, meets the hundred-foot setback, as the applicant said. And the, only the east portion is within that setback by just a little over five feet. And the house has been on the lot since nineteen ninety-seven. Um, and it cannot be modified in any way to meet the setback. This, to me, this is a, a minimal setback and a minimal request, and I'm in favor of it. I'm also in favor of the proposed addition.
And this is Mark, I pretty much concur with what Veronica just said. So, um, as far as I'm concerned, uh, I'm fine with this application. Um, I'm gonna open for public comment. And seeing none, I'll close public comment. Anybody else with questions or ready to tip, make a motion?
Uh, this is Ken, uh, there was a thought proposed by the, uh, staff report. That we might wanna put a condition on it that, uh, um, limits the expansion to the current proposed addition. And no other additions in the future.
This is Veronica speaking, um, I'm not in favor of placing a condition on it. Again, it's a minimal setback. I don't think that we should restrict the applicant to any further additions that are non-lakeside for such a small. That's just my opinion, I don't think that's kind of a harsh, a harsh condition.
This is Timothy, we, did, did we talk about, uh, gutters on this?
We did notice during lot views that there's some runoff, that when the rain comes, you've got some, shows some signs of runoff. It doesn't have any gutters at the time. Um, we, there's not a whole lot of options for, because of the elevation on that side of the house. Um, I guess, was that the, I don't know how your house faces here without looking at it. The side that doesn't have the fenced-in area, we could, there could be some guttering that direction possibly. But there's not really a way to gutter the house that's gonna go right inside that fence and then it would just rot the fence and. Just because the way the house was proposed, I mean, I'm definitely open to guttering and trying to help with the runoff. I'm, I just didn't see any possible solution for guttering unless they do some type of French drain sort of thing. Have you considered any gutters or anything for your help with your runoff? You don't have any erosion issues, we just noticed that there's obvious signs of the, when the water falls and just goes right to the lake and creates.
Yeah, as I understand, there is a, a sprinkler system that hasn't been used for quite a few years. So basically, the grass that's there is pretty nonexistent now. And so we were going to check into that to see if, um, if it's still even functional. But we're dealing with that until after we get done with everything. But we will definitely need to put gutters on the opposite of the lakeside. But you're, what you're talking about is the lakeside itself.
Just noticed that it, you just showed some signs that it had some runoff. Again, there were no direct erosion issues, just signs of runoff, so.
Yeah.
Um, if there's no further comments, I'm, I did public comment, correct?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve this application and, uh, adopt the staff's findings of facts. Maybe with a second.
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by myself to approve, accepting the staff's findings of facts, and a second by Veronica. Um, Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye, your application is approved. Beginning a letter from Environmental Services stating such, so.
Okay. Okay, and then we include the, the variance with the, um, building permit? Is that done? Or is that, does that have to be, um. Does that need to be applied together?
For the land use permit for the addition, you just would mention this variance and the fact that it was granted.
Okay.
And that will help staff with processing of the permit to know that it's.
So we'll just conclude it in with what we had included before then, okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, the next is variance application fifteen dash V dash twenty-three by David and Connie Anderson. Part of government lot four, section twenty-four, township one forty-one, range thirty-five, Arago Township on Potato Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel zero two point two four point zero one zero zero zero. Applicants are requesting to amend condition one of variance thirty-seven dash V dash twenty-one to allow an accessory structure to be placed on the lot. Got the applicant here, so if you could give us your name and permanent record or address for the record and then tell us what you wanna do.
My name is David Anderson, I live at two four one nine three Hazelwood Drive, Park Rapids, Minnesota. Uh, back in twenty-one, we had a request in front of the board to get a variance to put our septic system in, um, closer than the hundred-and-fifty-foot setback, which was granted. In that variance request, the board, um, put language in that variance that, uh, they felt there wasn't enough room on the land across the road. Private road from our house for additional structures, since that was the location for the secondary septic site. Since then, I've had a couple people come out, uh, Don Umtham came out and did a, just short of a septic design on the property. And done some other looking and talking to other people and I feel that, uh, there is enough room there. And I was asking the board to either change the language of the current ordinance or variance or to rewrite it, whatever, um. Eric and his staff recommends for that to the board, that's why we're here.
Okay, thank you. Question, Ken?
Yeah, I would just, uh, just for information, Eric, if we were to approve this, do we, do we, um. Nullify that condition one or do we modify that condition one, how, how do we, how do we do, how do we do this?
Eric speaking, you could do either of those two things, Ken. So you could stipulate that you're allowing an accessory structure and dial it in to what's proposed, or you could leave it open-ended and just strike that condition. There's probably some other scenarios you could come up with too.
Um, come on, I looked it up. Yeah, you know, I looked at that before, now, where is it here? Yeah, okay. The current, the current, uh, one says an accessory, uh, no accessory structure can be built on the portion of the lot lying north of the road. We could change that to say an accessory structure can be built on the portion of the lot lying north of the road. And an alternate day, drain field area preserved per drawing and application. So it's basically allows it and, and adds the condition that the, um. Currently proposed alternate, uh, drain field not be altered or built on.
Any other questions or comments on this? Application? While we're thinking, yeah, I'll open for public comment. And seeing none, we'll close public comment. Ready to make a motion on that?
This is Veronica speaking, I have a question for Eric before we move forward. If we remove the condition that says no other structures could be placed on that and he does place this and we move forward with this application. Will he still be able to put other accessory structures back there if there's room and he doesn't involve the septic? So multiple, he can still put multiple structures, we don't, we're not restricting him by any means.
Yeah, if you, if you leave it open.
Do I translate that, that I could change it to say only one accessory structure can be built across the road?
Honestly, during the lot views, when we were, when we were out there, my main focus was that he had the alternate septic sites. And if any other accessory structures, I would, in my mind, if they go, if the land use permit goes to the Environmental Services. They're going to review it to see where his alternate septic site would be and if it encroaches on that, then they would, um. Tell him to submit a variance application, so I believe we would be in the clear if we don't put any. Limitations.
Realistically, there really isn't a whole lot of other areas where.
Right.
Another structure could be placed.
So I think we're, it's just fine.
Just to say an accessory structure or one, just say an accessory structure can be built?
I think we don't need to give him any limi, any other limitations since he has given us an alternate septic site.
Then I could say accessory structures can be built. Sure.
As long as they preserve the.
Is that what you?
As long as they preserve the alternate.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I'm trying to find the words that, as you're saying, leaving the flexibility, don't just say you can only do one or you can, or leave it wide open, okay. Want to make public comment, did you?
I did that.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion that we accept, uh, the application and modify condition one of, uh, the thirty-seven V twenty-one. Variance application to read. Accessory structures can be built on the portion of the lot laying north of the road. And an alternate drain field area must be preserved per drawing in the application.
Okay.
Did I do it?
Yep, and accept the staff findings?
Yes, I accept the, I think they were all, uh, what I just, it won't change that, no, except the, uh, staff's findings of facts.
Okay, and this is Mark, I'll, uh, second Ken's motion, so we have a motion by Ken to, uh, approve this application and he's given his conditions and, um. I've seconded it, so, uh, Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye, so your application is approved and you'll get a letter from ESO stating such, thank you.
Very much.
Okay, the next one, uh, next application is variance application sixteen dash V dash twenty-three by Barbara Baxter. Part of government lot four, section five, township one forty-one, range thirty-three. Mantrap Township on Big Mantrap Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel two zero point zero five point zero zero seven zero zero. Applicant is requesting an after-the-fact variance from section five oh six of the Shoreland Management Ordinance. To exceed the seven-hundred-square-foot maximum footprint allowed for a guest cottage. We have the applicants here, if one of you could give your name and permanent address and then tell us what you wanna do.
It's Barb Baxter, twenty-seven sixty-two five County Road seven, Park Rapids.
And what are you looking to do? This is an after-the-fact?
Yeah, we wanna divide the land.
Okay, um. All right, we have any questions from the board on this?
Well, we approved the condition, uh, seventy-three V twenty-one to, to divide the land, but it was conditional on the fact that that. Trailer. Be either removed or reduced in size to meet the seven-hundred-square-foot, um. Guest cabin size.
This is Veronica speaking, I have a couple questions for the applicants.
Go ahead, Veronica.
During the lot views, you mentioned that you purchased the mobile home, uh, about eight years ago, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, did you have something there prior to this?
Well, years before, there was a mobile home, my brother lived there for years and then he built down on the other end of the lake.
So that first mobile home that was there, do you know the size of it? Was it smaller than this one?
It was bigger.
It was larger.
It was larger, or not larger?
I think it was like a twelve by sixty, twelve by sixty-five.
Mr. Chair, this is Mike, just for the record, if you could state your name and address.
Jim Baxter, twenty-seven six-two-five County Road seven, uh, first of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted that on the record.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, um, any other questions about this?
So, back to, um, the mobile home, so when you bought this new mobile home for there, when you replaced it with the other one. Um, were you aware that it was over square footage for what you were allowed to have, so? Did you contact Environmental Services and ask them what, you know, what your options were or what your limitations were?
We assumed since there was a mobile home there before. Why shouldn't there be, uh, room for another mobile home? Cause, uh, cause actually in all reality, we've tore down two cabins, a garage and a, uh. Living space, so we've reduced the amount.
Question for Eric, again, um, that mobile home that's there now has an addition that was put on. Would that addition have required a permit to be built? Did you, did you?
Actually, it came with it, I don't know anything about, I mean, and it's not really attached, it's sitting there right now.
It's a storage area.
Yeah, they just store stuff in it.
Is it atta, you're saying it's not attached?
Not attached.
It's bumped up against it, but they never attached it.
Just curious whether it would.
Do you access it from outside or from the other, from the trailer?
You have to come in the main door, cause there's no exit on it, it's just a.
So to get in it, would you get in it from the inside of the mobile home?
Yeah, you would have to go in.
So it somehow is attached, if you're.
No, it was never attached.
It's just bumped up, they don't, they don't use it.
You just use the back door to get in there?
Yeah, you would have to, yeah. Attach it if you're gonna use it for anything.
Okay.
And the deck out front is not attached either to the mobile home.
Okay. Eric, I'm, I'm gonna just ask you, I don't know if it's appropriate, are, are the applicants aware of this letter we received today?
No.
Okay, and, um. Have you talked with the township at all about the, your building and this, this request to keep it? Are you aware of the, the stance that the township has on this property?
No.
Okay, um. I'm gonna open for public comment right now and, uh. So if, if we'd like to make a public comment, that might be appreciated here.
Sure, and as you probably read, um, we, I apologize for not getting it in time for the. Site visit, I thought I just had it in time for tonight, so Eric.
Procedural again, could you please state your name and, and address for the record and then sign in?
Thank you, Mike.
Kimberly Olson, two five seven five two Heritage Road, Nevis, Minnesota. So we received the, um, the agenda and all the information for this board. And as I stated before, we're trying as a township because we've run into road problems, parcel split problems, subdivision problems, et cetera. We're trying to be a little bit more involved with the county. We're also in the process of, we're just now starting to revise our ordinance to make it more in line with the county, make it easier. Because right now, there's not, there's not a, an easy process for a property owner. To come, to get a variance from us and also get a variance from the county, et cetera, so we're trying to streamline that. But in the meantime, what we're, what we're doing is providing our input as the township. And in, in this case, um, I did read the staff report and the township does, uh, support the recommendations that the staff provided in that report. Some other things to consider that for, from our perspective is. Our ordinance, it does not address guest cottages per se. What it does say is that there is one principal structure allowed per lot. Cause there's own residential and that is to make sure that it doesn't get too crowded. It does mention guest cottages in the shoreland. As part of the shoreland, but, so if we consider the dwelling unit as an accessory structure. If, sorry, if you, as a dwelling unit that is not an accessory structure, then only one principal structure is allowed. And there was something in there mentioning an administrative subdivision. And that would have to be sent to the township for review, but my quick review of the, of the survey would indicate that. We would not sign off on it because it does not meet minimum lot width requirements to subdivide into the four lots. So that would be a problem.
What's the minimum width?
Two hundred twenty feet.
For, for just a single residence?
For the two hundred twenty-five feet width on each parcel at the building line. Which for us is a sixty-five-foot setback, but for you guys would be a hundred and, well, I don't know, is this a. If this is an environmental or a recreational lake, but.
Recreation.
Recreation, so it's about a hundred feet then for a setback. So, um.
Is it, do you have an area requirement on your, uh, besides a two hundred twenty-five feet width? Is there an area requirement, how many acres, how many thou, thousand square feet?
Okay, here, two and a half acres?
I mean, every parcel of land has to have two and a half acres.
In the residential.
Anywhere, repairian or otherwise?
In the residential district, the, like agricultural has a ten acre minimum.
Okay, so if this is split, you would require each half to, to have be.
It looked like it was gonna put four, I, I, like I said, I just did a quick review and I did notice one of the lots was only like at a hundred and sixty-nine feet in width. Just from my quick review of the survey. So I didn't look and see where the building lot, building line was, the measure, you know, that kind of thing. But that it, but because that has not been submitted to us for review, my concern is that when it does. There's a chance that it would not be signed off on by the township.
So if we, if we were to vote to approve this based on shore, our county Shoreland Management Ordinance. That doesn't. That doesn't necessarily guarantee that they could do it because they would have to meet your more restrictive requirements, that's the point you're making.
Um. So that's the issue if you, um, if you view it as a, a dwelling unit that's not an accessory structure. If you view the dwelling unit as an accessory structure, it's still a dwelling unit. It's, has a minimum in the township of twenty feet and this does not meet the twenty feet minimum width.
How long, how long has that been in place?
The ordinance was adopted in two thousand and three and this, this, I don't know when that was specifically put in there, but it. But the copy I have has been amended through two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
So it was in there at least as of two thousand and eleven.
Okay, when was this trailer moved here?
Pardon?
When did you move the trailer, this current one there?
Been a couple years, two, two years, I don't know.
At least about four years ago.
Four years, maybe?
Four? Okay, and you put a new se, a new septic system since then? I have a question for Eric. If, um, that bump out, which is a storied shed, were separated from the trailer. Is there any reason why they couldn't have a storied shed, uh, twelve by twenty-four somewhere, uh, on the lot without, uh. They can't or they could?
Could.
They could.
I'm just gonna get a permit for it.
So if they moved that ten feet away and had a separate entrance, then we'd be talking about a mobile home that's seven hundred and thirty-five square feet. With an appropriate well and septic system versus a seven-hundred square feet. So something that's in existence replaced something larger, uh, and it's been there for a considerable time and only thirty-five square feet over, over the guest requirement. Factual, okay. Without-
Any other input from, from you? Okay.
Questions for me?
Did you sign in there?
I did.
Okay, thank you, and we've got another public comment here.
Hello, my name's Jim Baxter. My address is one-zero-four-nine-five Maple Valley Drive, Maple Grove, Minnesota. I want to just clarify one thing. You were saying four parcels being split into, it is not being split into four parcels. It's two. The original blueprint shows four, but per our, a year ago, when I came to, to get the approval to split it, it was explained that it's just two. It's, it's not going into four.
The original split was two, but now it's proposing a second split?
No, no, no. I, I came in to get, get it split, to, to move one of the cabins off, which would help you with having only the main house and a guest cab or guest thing. Because the cabin that is there currently would become its own property. And that is, that variance was approved a year ago in January or February. So, when she was saying four, I think she, I think they were looking at the blueprints online. And the, the original blueprint does show multiple, like, you know, multiple parcels or properties, but we weren't going to do all of those, just the, just the two.
Do you have this one? Doesn't that describe it, one, two? We can pull up the variance.
This residual property that we're now talking about is left with a home and this trailer guest cabin, that's all.
Currently, currently as it stands right now, it has the main house, the trailer house, and, and a cabin that was from the resort years ago.
See, that, that used to be at one time Olson's Lodge, so there was six cabins. And three of them went to the brother-in-law, and she inherited three of them. We tore, we tore down two of them plus a garage.
Where's this third cabin? I don't remember seeing it there when we looked at something. You told me it was a house.
It was, it was down-
There is a well.
That's the well.
There is, there is a well that has a house on it.
Where, where, where is the-
The cabin is straight towards the lake from that bump house.
Oh.
Way down.
Oh, okay, so it wasn't obvious to see it then?
If you're looking right there-
Yeah, when you, when you drove in, you seen that, that first gate, there was a road there, and then you came to the other one?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's down that road, right at the top of the hill.
Oops, Eric had something, maybe that helped you.
Yeah, you can, you can almost see it there in the-
Yeah. Wherever the second road is, it's right straight down.
Yeah, right, right about where your cursor is, just a little higher up, or towards the road. Right in that area, that's where that- That's your fish house there, so it's right to the side.
That's my fish house.
So, right, if you go just north, just north, right there, it's right in those trees, right there, is that well.
Now, the split hasn't taken place, right?
No.
No, I just- This, this could be ta-, there was a condition on the split of resolving the trailer. So, I'm waiting on that before I can go forward.
Anything else?
Unless you have any questions for me?
No, other than you signed in?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other public comment?
Yes, I'd like to make one comment. First off, yes, my great-
I'm going to close public comment. You're my applicant, so you don't have to fall under that category. So, I'm closing public comment, so now go ahead.
Okay, that trailer house, my grandson lives in there. If you see, I've got oxygen, I have COPD bad. I've also got bronchitis extremely bad. I can hardly breathe, and it pains me to get here tonight, but I made sure I came. My grandson takes care of me. If anything happens to me, he's there in a minute to help me. I tell you what, he's a godsend.
Okay, thank you.
This is Veronica speaking. The other cabin that they were visiting about, what is its current condition? And is it in use at this time?
Oh, yes. My, my son comes up from the city, he's in their family, they use it all the time.
Okay.
It has a new septic tank and everything down there. Yeah, it should have been in the paperwork that it was all updated.
Any other questions by my board? Ken?
I want to re, I want to track back. If the split in property takes place, Eric, the residual one that has this trailer on it, what's the lake frontage and what is the area? Or I should maybe just, what I'm asking, is it, is it a conforming lot to have a guest cabin on it? Size-wise and setbacks, et cetera? Are we talking about parcel B or what parcel here?
That is the question.
It has to be parcel A, right?
It's got to be.
It's probably-
Let's see.
I'm going to allow him to make another clarification, okay?
This is Jim Baxter, to your, the parcel D that you're looking at is the parcel that would be split off.
That's where the cabin three is?
That's the cabin, yes. The parcel C, E, and the one on the north side of B are all kind of U-shaped. They would all stay together. So, those, all three are not, they'd be one parcel. It's not, it's not three parcels.
A, C, and D is one parcel?
A, C, and, A, E, and C.
E, where's E?
Right across the, on the other side of the road.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, those, those-
A, E.
And C are all connected. The only one that would be, come off would be parcel D. That's the cabin.
Are they considered connected or two separate things, Eric? Well, let me check parcel A. This trailer's on parcel A. Let me go back to that, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can you show me that again? I want to look at the numbers. Oh, yeah, there we go. I see.
So, to your question, Ken, C would meet our minimums, but it would, apparently, per the township's input, it would not meet theirs. But it would meet our minimums for having a guest cottage.
I'm sorry, you got to say it again.
It would meet our minimums?
Yeah.
But not man trap township's minimums?
I can only deal with our county ordinance right now. Because I don't know when their ordinance was changed and if it's grandfathered and all that. I'm just, move it down to eight. Let me see, what is it, what does it say for square footage? Oh, ninety-four thousand? And two-hundred-and-sixty-four feet of frontage, that's easily meets our requirements for having a guest cabin. Okay.
Did I close public comment? I did, okay. Any other questions here by our board? Well, I'm going to pose a question to you, the applicants, and just see, we have had one board member just inquire about the idea, at least throw it out there, if you were to remove your add-on from that home, that trailer home. If that were presented to you as a condition of approval, are you interested in that?
Yes.
Yes.
Because they don't use it anyhow.
See, see what you-
I was asking them if they would be open to removing that addition to their trailer, to bring the trailer more into compliance.
Okay, I was writing down some numbers when you were talking, okay.
Okay. Anybody ready to make a motion on this?
No, but this is Veronica speaking. If you're going in the direction of approving that the seven-hundred-and-thirty-five square foot mobile home be retained, I guess my suggestion would be throwing a condition on it that if the, if the structure is ever removed or replaced, then it needs to meet, then it needs to meet the seven-hundred square foot requirement, so that it could be coming in compliance. If you're moving forward with approving, then I would suggest that condition be placed, that when the structure is removed or replaced, that it has to meet the seven-hundred square foot.
Okay, any new one would have to meet, yes.
If, if you're going that route, that would be a suggested condition that I would recommend.
Tim, over you on this.
I think-
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this application on the condition that the storied structure that's attached to the trailer be removed. And that if in the future the trailer is removed, a future guest cabin has to meet the seven-hundred square feet.
That was Veronica's recommendation.
Now, do we need to find, findings of fact before?
Yes.
Should I add to the, add as a condition the fact that final action on the splitting is dependent on the townships? We don't have to, not that at all. I shouldn't try to go down that path at all.
We need to acknowledge that.
I don't think, we're, we're dealing with the shoreline ordinance.
Okay, from a shoreline ordinance standpoint, that's what we're looking at.
Okay.
Okay?
Are you ready to do findings?
Yeah, I was going to do it, okay, I was going to say, is it in harmony with the general purpose and intent of official controls? If the property is split, the residual area section or parcel A is ninety-four thousand square feet, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven feet at the lakeshore, and, and the structure is two-hundred-and-eighty feet set back from the lake, and it's been there for over four years, and it only exceeds the requirement by thirty-five square feet. Therefore, I think it, it meets the intent. It is in harmony with the official controls. Is the property owner proposing to use the property, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the official control? And I would say yes. A guest cabin on, on a large lot on the lake is not unusual, and it is a reasonable use.
And Ken, I can also help add to that one, that you've applied conditions that the twelve-by-twelve addition be removed, and that if the mobile home is ever removed or replaced, that it must meet the seven-hundred-square-foot guest cottage requirement with those conditions.
Spell that out in this first one, yes?
Yeah, and this, and number two, is the property owner proposing to use the lake, the property in a reasonable manner? Yes to everything you put, and then also yes because you've applied two conditions that will also support it.
Yes, okay. If I have to state that you, Eric-
Which is it?
No, we did. So, number three?
Is the need for variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owner? This is a difficult one, but there was a trailer there originally. It was replaced by a smaller one, and there, help me out here.
There'll be subdividing the property, so it does meet the-
Requirements.
Ordinances.
Okay.
Okay.
Will the issuance maintain the essential character of the locality? Yes, it has a resort format and is not changing. Does it stated practical difficulty more than economic considerations? And the answer is yes, economic con- considerations were not part of the application.
This is Timothy. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken, and he cited the findings. He's given us findings with conditions. And a second by Timothy. So, Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
This is Ken. Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark. I vote aye. So, your application has been approved with those conditions, and you'll be getting a letter from Eric at Environmental Services. You have a question?
One question, and this is probably for Eric. He probably knows it more. Okay, we're talking about having to move the shed or whatever it is. How far away do we have to move it to meet your, your requirements?
I said remove it.
Get a permit for it.
Oh, permanently?
He could get a permit, right?
He could get a permit for it, but the, the, the way the thing was stated, it's removed.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
For clarification, we, we required this to be reduced to seven-hundred square feet?
Seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five, okay.
Unless it's replaced, then the condition says seven hundred.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Two more to go, one more to go.
Okay, next is variance application seventeen-v dash twenty-three by Terry and Nadine Inman, part of the south one-half of Government Lot Four, Section Five, Township one forty-three, Range thirty-two, Lakeport Township on Garfield Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel one-nine-point-zero-five-point-zero-one-zero-zero-zero. Applicants are requesting variances from Part One, Section five-oh-two-point-two of the shoreline management ordinance for a proposed addition to a non-conforming dwelling to encroach on the ten-foot rear lot line setback. Part Two, Section seven-oh-two of the shoreline management ordinance for a proposed lakeside deck addition to a non-conforming dwelling located within the one-hundred-foot ordinary high-water mark setback. Part Three, Section five-oh-two-point-two of the shoreline management ordinance for a proposed detached garage to be located within the hundred-foot ordinary high-water setback. Part Four, Section nine-oh-three of the shoreline management ordinance for a proposed lakeward expansion of a driveway located within the hundred-foot ordinary high-water setback. And Part Five, Sections five-oh-two-point-two and eight-oh-one of the shoreline management ordinance for an alternate drain field site to be located within the hundred-and-fifty-foot ordinary high-water mark setback and less than seventy-five feet from the ordinary high water. If we could get the applicants up here.
That was enough.
Yes, it was.
All right, I am Nadine Inman, and I reside at thirteen-seventy-eight Central Avenue North in Laporte, Minnesota.
I am Terry Inman, reside at thirteen-seventy-eight Central Avenue, Central Avenue North, Laporte, Minnesota, also.
Okay, so if you could just tell, tell us again briefly what you're looking to do?
Yeah.
We'll talk about it.
So, the reason that we're here again tonight with a new variance request is due to our lot size and shape, obviously. We are proposing to construct a twenty-four-by-thirty-four detached garage, a seven-by-ten entry room or mudroom, and a twelve-by-twenty-eight deck with a four-and-a-half-by-twenty-foot walkway on the existing structure that we have there in Laporte. Since we began this process in February, we have taken the board's suggestions and complied, complied with them regarding conditions and suggestions that you have gave us at the previous meetings we've been at. regarding conditions and suggestions that you have gave us at the previous meetings we've been at. Just a few things I want to mention quick is, we have downsized the garage. We've reduced and moved lakeward additions. We have eliminated our small structures off the property. We have moved a few structures to comply with the lake shore setbacks and got the required permits. We have had the county come out and measure for the ordinary high-water mark setbacks as requested. We hired a Leto on-site design to actually come out and give us a site inspection for that alternate septic, and that actually turned into a full septic design for us. We hired Castle Landscaping Services for that stormwater plan. We have moved that proposed garage that we're asking for more south to gain further distance from the ordinary high-water mark. We have moved the previously proposed mudroom to the back of the structure, and we have moved the proposed porch to now the south side of the existing structure so that that would be farther away from the ordinary high-water mark. So at this time, we are open to take any questions regarding our variance application.
This is Mark speaking, so if I understand correctly, because last time we met, I, I kind of did an about-face on you. My concern at that time was that we didn't know at that meeting exactly where your existing house was located. But if I understand correctly, Eric has had his staff out there, and we've confirmed where that is. So I'm comfortable there with that. And if you did mention, I'm sorry, but did you say, suggest in, in your talk right now that you're going to be removing that storage shed that's sitting on the drain field? Is that part of your intention?
It will be removed with the variance approval.
Okay.
Yep.
To be removed.
Okay.
Yep.
Removed, yes.
Okay. Anybody else with questions?
This is Veronica speaking, I, I do have a couple of comments, and I, I do have questions later on. I do want, I do appreciate that you took our feedback. You did move things around, you have the entryway on the non-lakeside now for the mudroom. You've reduced the size of the garage. Originally, your first proposal, I think I have on here, is a 26 by 50 at a 28-foot ordinary high-water mark. And you've reduced it down to 24 by 34 at a 36-foot OHW and 40 on the other side. So you have taken some information and made some changes, and I appreciate that. And the alternate drain field site, again, that's a big plus for your, your entire property, that's a plus for you.
Right.
Again, I've been told it's not, if your drain field fails, it's when it fails, you have another place to go with it.
Exactly.
That's a good thing.
Yep.
I do have some concerns with the property line that we now have to address on the rear side with the certificate of survey possibly being needed to accurately locate that lot line. I know during lot views, we had lots of discussion that most likely the lot line is the fence line, is what you've been told, and I greatly take that information, and I, and I accept it, except that, I mean, I, I accept it from you hearing that and then some other members. For myself, I would like to see an actual certificate of survey, only because you have two items that you're proposing at the ten, less than the 10-foot side rear lot line, and your garage one is gonna be right now currently at the 13 feet. But if that lot line is not where you think it is, it could be less than the 13 feet, or less than that seven feet over there. So that's kind of a big key for me. There are other, in my opinion, according to your request and the modifications that you've made, there are some things that I am in favor of, so there's only a couple of things that may still need to wait on my end. That's all I have for now.
This is Ken.
Yes.
I'm probably more willing to accept the fence line, because I went through a similar experience with some property not too many years ago. And got into a big argument with the county and the whole bit, and they said, yeah, that fence line's been there a long time, we're gonna agree that we're gonna accept that, okay? Just sidebar to my thinking. What I'm really trying to get at is, where would the monuments be?
So.
That they would have to use to really determine where that property line is.
So you're talking about the monuments that they survey from, or the monuments on the property?
The monuments that the county and legal people would agree, that's a bench line for it. And is there a property description for your property and/or for the railroad easement? Anywhere, is there anywhere where it's stated what that is or where it is?
So Terry has some additional information that I think the board will see, will, it will be very insightful information to provide to the board. I'll let him take it from here.
So as far as where they come from, I cannot answer that question. I have all kinds of information on where the random survey is from. So I'm gonna, can I back this up to the 2007 survey, which we actually asked that to be removed from the package, so there won't be any. We talked to Eric about it, and that survey was deemed inaccurate. So it's 2007 when we had it surveyed, and it conflicted with the survey from 1972 from the Ockerman L. Clark survey. So our neighbor to the south, Kevin Erickson, hired a lawyer, Greg Larson, I believe, from Park Rapids. We hired lawyer Thomason Law from Park Rapids. Kevin Erickson also hired a, another surveyor to look at, to not do the survey, but to look at the information of the two surveys.
And that, I believe, was Meadow?
Yes.
Meadow?
Meadow Lane.
I can't remember, but anyways, he, he has that information.
Well, Meadow Lane was the, actually the arbitrator, so that was Arrow of Park Rapids. So he looked at the surveys, he came up with something, he said that the Ockerman survey was closer, but he also came up with a different, where he would have located differently than either survey.
Then, then the survey that we had done in 2007 by Win Smith.
And the L. Clark survey. Okay, so then we got an arbitrator involved. Arbitrator was Meadow Lane surveys of, well, I'm not sure where they're from. But anyways, they looked at the property. He also came up with a different area where they should have measured off and this and that. They all have different, I thought, surveys at the time would have been, this is where it is. Evidently, that's not true. So if you go off the 2007 survey, if, when it goes into Kevin Erickson's property, the south, so it'd be our southwest corner was six, actually, that is where it shows on there. So when that's showed there, you end up from where that survey marker was to the center of the railroad bed, end up being 61 feet, okay? The L. Clark survey stake from 1972 is 50-foot from the center railroad bed. Also, 1972, to my knowledge, the railroad track would be in place at that time. When they did the survey in 2007, there was no track there. So after, like I said, all this, two years of lawyers and two years of, or information, whatever, that that was deemed inaccurate, and matter of fact, in 2009, in November, the agreement was to remove the stakes from the property because it was inaccurate from a neighbor's property. Now, as far as the fence line, so when we bought the property, Jack Lehman sold it to us, and, and we asked him and a realtor where the property line is. He says, the fence line on the west, the south, and there's no north at that time. But anyway, so Palmer Emblem, who's the guy that owned the whole piece of property north of us, he's dead now, but in 1959, when he got out of service, he bought that whole piece of property and had it split in 1972.
So Palmer owned our property and the property to the north of us, and split it, and that's where we?
Can I, can I just stop for a second?
Sure.
The DNR acquired this property at some point in time, right?
Yes.
Or it was gifted to them? What did they think they got? I mean, like 50 feet, you know, 50 feet from the center line of the railroad track? What, what is the deed, do you ever check, what does the deed say for the property that the, that the DNR got?
So I don't know the answer to that question, but I know that the, it is, in that area right there, it is 100-foot wide.
Okay, but from where, from what?
So all the surveys I seen, when I've been looking at surveys, so like where the marker is, they mark from there to the center, I'm sorry, to the center of the railroad bed.
So if, if.
So as far as I know, there's no markers.
Come up with a description, they would say it's plus or minus 50, or 50 feet either side of the center line of the railroad tracks? Or the?
I don't know the answer to that. Do you know the answer?
No, well, that's why I'm asking the question. There's a suggestion from a colleague, they get it surveyed. Usually surveyors need some benchmark point to figure from, and some deeds to look at. And the first thing I would do if I was a surveyor, I'd wanna know what the DNR thinks they own.
Sure.
Well.
Heard that yet at this point.
So the DNR has been out there twice.
So can I?
Yep.
Can I address this? So I wanna get back to the fence line, which will address the DNR.
Yeah.
Okay, so in 1992, when we signed the purchase agreement on it, there was no road going into the property. So we had to get, so got a lawyer involved, Thomason Law, the same lawyer that we had. We had to get an easement from the DNR, okay? So easement was a 25-foot wide easement on their east boundary of the Paul Bunyan State Trail.
Yeah.
Okay? They came out there and flagged it, and when they flagged it, they put the flags on the fence line.
The DNR did.
The DNR put the flags on our fence line and said, you can go 25 feet that way. And they also put flags 20, or 25 foot from that, 75 feet into our property.
So they would, so they would, if I had them sitting here in court, so to speak, they would say, yes, we, we acknowledge that that old fence line is what we believe is the east boundary of what we own.
So I have some more information on that. So actually, Tim went up with me, and I don't know who went up with Tim, to look at the alternative septic site, who else? Yep, and so there is a DNR sign that says State Trail that is literally right on the fence line, okay? And not only that, there is on the property north of us, which Palmer Emblem's son owns, which is probably, so it used to be all one-piece property. There is also another fence, or another marker on that one that is right on the fence line also. So in two incidents, the DNR acknowledged that fence line as the property line.
So we should sit here being convinced in any decision we make that that fence line is the baseline for right-of-way setbacks for your garage and for your septic system and for your mudroom?
Yes.
I, I'm, I, I'm accepting what you're saying, I don't know my colleagues, but.
Go ahead, Mike.
This is Mike. As I understand it, the DNR has given you an easement, 25 feet from the eastern boundary of the right-of-way of the Paul Bunyan Trail, down in that corner of your lot, is that correct?
That's, that is correct.
Based on that and the fact that at some point in recent history, the DNR acknowledged that was the line, I'm comfortable without a survey stating, you know, I'm comfortable with the fence line, is it, is, is the survey? I just, I guess in my mind, I don't see a problem going forward, because the DNR is, if this were gonna be argued, the DNR would have to go back to that point and say, that's what we agreed to. We can require another survey, I'm not sure, based on what I was looking at when Eric was calling up the known points. But we've already got two or three surveys that don't agree, so do we need a fourth one that doesn't agree? Or can, in my mind, I can agree that the DNR says that was the line. The applicants say that was the line, there was remnants of that line. Their trail sign is there, the so-called corners of property all seem to line up. So my, I have no concerns with that personally.
Yeah, and that was my point, one more survey, it's just gonna be another rabbit hole. And I, so I'm personally, sorry Veronica, but I, I've been through a couple of these.
Yeah, it was a two-year process for us.
And, and that got very, very complicated.
This is Veronica speaking.
My garage was on.
Those are. Those are valid points that, you know, that you guys noticed during the lot view, that you noticed. I know, we also have the information, like you mentioned, while we were at the lot view, and you showed us exactly where the stake was and how you had the 25 feet to have that driveway installed. And, and they're valid points. I'm just looking forward ahead with future property owners and setbacks and stuff, which was, you know, my main point on approving something close to the lot line, if that is the lot line, so.
Veronica, did you have any other questions or concerns?
Not at this time, not at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna open for public comment, and seeing none, we'll close that public comment, okay?
Mr. Care?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mike.
I've got some questions on the decks and the walkway in the front. I, I appreciate the fact that you've moved that porch around, and it's now past, it's, it meets the setback from the previous variance. I also appreciate the work gone into moving that garage and the drainage thought out about that garage. So that is less of a concern. But, but you're asking for, in my mind, a fairly large deck, 12 by 28, so you're coming 12 feet out, 12 feet closer to the lake than the existing variance allows. I guess in my mind, I'm thinking that that deck can be scaled back some to eight, possibly 10 feet. I know it's not a lot, but when you're looking at squares and the closeness to the lake, the amount of square footage and some, that would, would, would interest me, and also with, again, the walkway, a four and a half-foot walkway, I think most walkways, when you see these, are, are three, maybe four feet. And, and so again, I'm, I'm in my mind trying to think, does it make sense to push that a little farther back? Or is it the lot such that that, that impact is, is not going to really have an effect? But I have some concerns on that deck size.
So is there environmental concerns with the, as far as the, the deck sizing?
It's an impervious surface added, and it's closer to the lake than, than the existing variance, which is 20 feet closer than the ordinance allows. And I understand that just based on the lot that that was necessary, so I'm looking at, you know, in my mind, I'm trying to question whether reducing that size and reducing the impervious surface improves conditions, or if what we're talking here, based on the actual site visit, it, it isn't really going to impact it, I, I guess I'm asking that question out loud.
This is Veronica speaking, I have one comment, just to maybe help Mike as well with the, you know, being close to the ordinary high-water mark setback. Our first visit there was snow-covered. Our second visit there was green, snow was gone. And we did see a lot under the trees where there was a lot of ground exposed. This last visit, though, the applicants have put forth a lot of effort on the green space. There was grass under every single tree, pretty much, that where the, where grass could be planted, grass is growing. I, I, again, I have to give attention to that, because I made note of it on my first, my first.
my first view there. And I'll let somebody else comment before I have to back up and ask a question.
This is Ken. Couple thoughts relative to what Mike was suggesting. I kind of flipped this around myself, and then I thought, we have, I think in our ordinance, or at least our typical thing is that for a grandfathered or predating, a structure predating the ordinance, if somebody wants to build lakeward, we allow 15% of the setback. Is that, is that correct? And 15% of 80 feet is 12. And so I was thinking, yeah, we should squeeze down the desk, and I said, well, how do I decide? And I said, well, by ordinance for, I don't know if it applies, I don't think it applies to this because this is after ordinance, but the ground, the, the kind of premise behind it is 15%. So I kind of would buy into the, into the 12 feet. Plus, to the runoff thing, they, they are installing, although it doesn't show on any diagram, and we'd have to make sure it be a condition, that they are building, I don't know, call it a cistern or a, I don't know...
The landscaper called it a sump, but...
A sump? I always thought it was a sump, it's something you pumped out of.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I thought, too, but there's no pumping it.
But you've gone, you've gone to the level of establishing, putting in a sump that's literally going to take any water runoff from the whole front of your house into a sump. So that, so that completely takes away the runoff from, from the expansion or what's there, plus the 15% number. I've sort of said, all right, I guess I'll buy into the deck site, only for that reason, that reason. Just my, an argument, you know, I go either way, but that's my, my view of that. My bigger concern is, why, why should we include the variance for an alternate septic site now?
That was suggested to us by the Environmental Services Department.
Okay. But I, okay, so I need...
They were, can I?
Yeah.
So they were, the septic guy talked to, not Eric, I don't remember his name, but he suggested that we put it on our variance.
Yes.
Okay. I was just questioning, is it because they think yours is going to fail?
No, ours passed inspection.
50 feet? I don't know, I don't know, Tim, what you'd think about a 50-foot...
We regularly have our septic serviced.
This is Tim speaking. I, I think it's good planning and save them, anything can happen, and save them a lot of money and time if something happens to their existing system.
And you didn't have a problem with the 50 feet from the lake?
No.
Okay.
I do not have a problem with that 50 feet from the lake. Also, while I got a microphone, I'll say that on that, in front of the house, that topography there, the, the ice push made a swell there. So even the runoff, there's ice push up that stops that runoff.
Okay. Okay, so I'm, I'm okay then with the 50 feet alternate septic.
This is Veronica. I have a question for Eric. So after the lot views, I would like to get your staff's outlook now, since you also were there to see where the fence line was and where the DNR signs were, if your outlook still, if you're looking at that as that was most likely a fence line, and that would be their property line, or if you're still looking forward to a certificate of survey to get that lot line established.
Everybody had valid points there, you know, without digging into it, we don't know how clear the DNR's standing on the right-of-way is. Like I was mentioning, there's been multiple surveys that aren't in agreement already. If you get another one, is it, how solid will it be? We don't know. I see it a lot with survey work, that fence lines are off, and then it gets into, has it been the property line for a long enough period of time that there can be adverse possession claims relative to where that fence line is? That's possible here, but you're dealing with the state as opposed to another private landowner, and that changes things. The main thing from staff standpoint of raising that issue was just for due diligence, of reaching out to the state to make them aware of it. Didn't sound like they were really going to take an active research role because they've got larger encroachment issues elsewhere that they're dealing with, and this is a proposed one, not a necessarily known one. So I think the board's vetted it about as thoroughly as it can be.
Okay.
And then ultimately, if you were to approve it, it's based on the information in the application, and if there would come to be issues down the road, that's something that the applicants would be undertaking those projects with that in mind, and that possibility of the state down the road possibly disagreeing with where things are located.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody ready to make a motion?
This is Timothy. I'll make a motion to approve all of the parts to this application. I don't think I have to repeat that he's going to remove the shed, but I'll make it a condition that he has to.
Shed on the septic system?
Yep.
Yep.
He'll be removing that.
And can we go ahead and do the condition as well with the sump pumps and the, and the, I mean, I know they're, you showed them on there, but I would just like that stormwater management plan implemented.
The stormwater management plan.
Yeah.
That is part of the condition, the sump in the driveway for the garage and the sump next to the house.
Correct. Two sumps.
Yep.
Yep.
So that's a condition that allows the install.
You told me designed for the 100-year rainstorm.
Rainfall, yeah.
Okay.
It's plenty big, I think.
Oh, yeah.
I don't need to cover the, our, our position by making any conditions that all improvements stay on their property, do I?
No.
Just as a site plan.
That's what they're indicating. You can just say approve per the site plans.
Okay, it's, okay, that sounds good to me. So I can't think of any other conditions I would add.
I don't think there are any.
Okay. Is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls? Yes, because all the stormwater issues will be taken care of, and, and the, there's a condition that it'll be installed. Number two, is the property owner proposing to use this property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by an official control? Yes. A garage and alternate septic and home expansion with a lakeside deck is a reasonable use on this irregular lot? Where am I? Number three, is the need for variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners? Yes, this is pinched between a state, the property is pinched between a state trail right-of-way and the, and the lake. It's long and narrow, so it is unique, and they were allowed to build in there. Will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of locality? Yes, its locality is made up of full-time and seasonal residences, and I'll adopt the staff's findings.
For number five. Okay. Thank you for that, Tim. I'll second your motion. So Tim has made a motion to approve and given his conditions, and also his findings a fact, and I've seconded it. So Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye. Application is approved. You'll get a letter from Eric's Environmental Services, and you're good to go.
I'm sure you're getting sick of seeing us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All I've got would be roughly for July, the agenda will be similar in size, if not maybe one or two applications lighter than, I don't know, it'll be, it'll be pretty close. So oddly, not our usual busy midsummer agenda, so we'll probably pay for it later in the year, but...
We want easy ones.
Single parts, multi-parts.
That's an official request.
Yeah.
There's none as involved as what you've dealt with this month.
Okay, okay. Anybody else?
This is Mike. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
This is Mark. I'll second that. Timothy, how do you vote?
Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye. Meeting is adjourned.